Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order the February 6th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
President.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who are watching online and who wish to speak during Hearing of the Public, they do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will remain open for your requests for the next five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you'd like a direct response to any question that you might have. We will turn next to the next meeting on our agenda, which is our new set of board priorities for the time period between today and May 1st. We won't spend a ton of time on these, but I wanted to share what they are, where they came from, and how I hope they can be helpful. So you'll see, and for those of you who don't have our agenda in front of you, we have five. Our first priority between now and May 1st is to do strong progress monitoring for the mid-year superintendent evaluation. The second is to take significant steps forward on strategic planning. Third, to run a process to update our board bylaws. Fourth, to continue to make progress on transportation for students to and from school. And then lastly, to continue to strengthen board superintendent relations and clarify board roles versus administration roles. These priorities came from our retreat and our board work session, which we had two Saturdays ago. I want to thank my colleagues in the administration for their time and engagement over that Saturday. And we've done this now a couple of times over the last little over a year, where we say in advance what our most important priorities are. Those of you who have the agenda can take a look at a table we have that says, here's more specifically where we want to be on each of these five by May 1st. We hold ourselves accountable to the public for making progress on those five. We'll provide those updates about once a month. And we even, in the past, have tracked our time with the goal that we spend more than half of our time in our public meetings on these items that feel most important. So more to come on each of these, and just want to say thank you to everybody for your engagement two Saturdays ago. As we continue, we'll move to item C, which is our superintendent's update.
Thank you, Board President. So very, very quick, we do want to just update. I think that there is awareness that we did have an emergency situation last night at Rothenburg where there is a valve that has malfunctioned. We're not quite sure yet the reason for the malfunction, but it did malfunction. And so as of last night, about 9:30, I think we were contacted, there were about six feet of water in the basement. And so we're going through the process right now. The water is being pumped out. We do not have a really good assessment right now, because I think we know when things go underwater, a part of what has to happen is you have to get it dry before you can really assess how difficult or how challenging things may be. Right now, it appears that there is some damage to our HVAC system. There's damage to other systems that are in the school that keeps the -- we don't have electricity in the building right now. So our students are not in school today. We did send notice earlier today that our students would not be in school tomorrow. We are believing that we will be able to at least get teachers back into the building on Wednesday, long enough to get their computers. Some teachers take them home, some don't. Some students take their computers home, some don't. So we want to make sure that we give them time to get their, to get their computers, to get any additional resources that students may need. And then we will go to remote learning on Thursday and Friday. In order to make sure that our students are also fed appropriately, we will have students able to pick up food boxes tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00 that would cover at least 10 days of food for the families. So we want to make sure that we share that information. We made the decision to get the information out as quickly as we could and give families and caregivers more of an opportunity to plan versus trying to do it day by day. We know that tomorrow where we would be, and day by day, we want to give a little more notice than that. So we will definitely keep the board and the public abreast of where we are. We have updated all of our social media sites. There's an update for the families on Rothenburg's site as well, and we also provided a robocall to all of the families also. So if there are questions, we would ask that the family and the community go to our social media sites first, so to our Facebook page, our district website, as well as the school's site as well, for the most updated information.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. So we are now at the item on our agenda for Hearing of the Public. I have no requests from people in the meeting. Are there any requests for people in person to speak tonight? No. And are there any requests online for anyone to speak tonight? We have no last call. Any last requests for Hearing of the Public? Mr. Morosky wants to speak at Hearing of the Public. No. Okay. We will keep moving. And we will move on to item E, which is approval of minutes. I understand here that we have a -- I'm going to go through these carefully, because there just is at least one adjustment that I know of. We have the tax budget hearing for January 9th. I have the revised -- nope, I have the organizational meeting for January 9th, and I have a revised business meeting for January 9th. Treasurer Wagner, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Can you give voice for just a second to what is revised in that business meeting?
So under the business meeting, there was a vote on the resolution on the strategic plan timeline. And one board member had exited the room and was not available for the vote. That was mistakenly recorded as a no vote instead of a non-vote, and so that was been corrected.
Okay, and that's been fixed in the version that we're going to ask people to vote on here in a second.
Yes, it's in front of you with the corrected at the top.
Great. Thank you very much. I will come in one second. So is there a motion to accept the following minutes? Tax budget hearing, January 9th, organizational meeting, January 9th, revised business meeting, January 9th, special meeting, January 23rd, business meeting, January 23rd, business meeting, work session, January 28th?
To move.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I'm not exactly sure, but I believe the tax budget minutes may reflect in that day that we were having three meetings back-to-back that a pledge of allegiance was uttered, and I don't know that it was.
Question?
I believe the tax budget needs to be, minutes need to be revised. When I last looked at it, it appeared that it said that we did the pledge of allegiance at that meeting, and I don't believe that we did. That was the day we had multiple meetings.
And so I think that sounds like a friendly amendment to our motion maker. Vice President Craig, any concerns?
Nope. It's a great friendly amendment.
We'll accept that as a friendly amendment?
It's as friendly as it gets.
I find Ms. Bolton to be very friendly. Do we have any other discussion on the motion to approve the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are at our committee reports for this evening. I would like to offer a challenge to our presenters this evening to see if you could keep your reports under three and a half minutes. That's not a hard constraint, but I will offer a friendly reminder at minute three and a friendly reminder at 3 minutes and 30 seconds. And it is up to our presenters whether they decide to take on that challenge or not. And then with five committee reports, if we keep them sufficiently short, we should have plenty of time for Q and A. So we'll hear first from Board Member Jones for the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole.
Okay, thank you. I guess this is actually the first sort of formal presentation of the minutes of the newly-formed Student Achievement Committee of the Whole. And for our public knowledge, if you haven't been watching us or whatever, you know that we've been working for several weeks to merge the board committee into a full committee of the entire board. And so this is the first sort of official report, and with the new name being Student Achievement Committee of the Whole. We continued. I've had a couple of conversations with our superintendent, and I think we're on the same page about what direction this committee will go in terms of its agenda and work plan. We, it is, I'm hopeful that we will have a work plan in a very timely way. Hopefully, I don't know if it'll be ready by the next committee meeting, but we will have it ready for presentation and approval very soon. Okay, we spent a little bit of time talking about the superintendent's evaluation and a tentative monitoring schedule. One of the things that the superintendent reminded us of is that she's needing to add dates in which the data that we are asking her to provide us is, comes to us, and then we'll work through the evaluation based on that type of schedule and align with the date so that we can actually have data presentations with that. We also talked a little bit about the board's goals and guardrails, which are a high priority for us. And we'll also review the Ohio standards for the superintendent to include that in her evaluation. The superintendent did speak to us and gave us information about the Professional Development Day, which was an update, as I understand it, as we understand, as she presented to us, it is now a requirement of the state to provide professional development around structured literacy. And she gave us a very strong explanation of what that is required by the state. It's grounded in the science of reading, so strong emphasis on teaching evidence-based components of literacy and evidence-based practices. Then we moved on. We had a pretty in-depth discussion about the program audits that occurred through the ad hoc committee, and I won't go into a lot of detail about that. I will defer that discussion to the ad hoc committee. But a considerable amount of time presenting information on the findings of that particular effort. Again, the ad hoc committee may decide to go into a little more detail about that. Let's see, if there's anything else. Okay, we talked a little bit about, I keep saying a little bit, we talked a lot about these things, guys, but the strategic plan process, we did agree, we did agree that we needed to have sort of a parallel process of working, of the board working with our community on developing mission and vision.
That's three and a half, but please take whatever time you need.
Okay, I'm almost done, I promise. And, and working with the, and working, working parallel with the superintendent to do the fractional pieces of that. So I present these minutes as written and hope for approval.
Thank you very much, Board Member Jones. Any questions from board members on the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole report? Okay, thank you very much. Moving next to Policy and Equity, we're going to hear from Mr. Morosky.
We solved all the problems that, no, so seriously, start me over, start my time over.
Oh, no, the clock runs.
No, oh my God. Reported Policy and Equity Committee was our first one of the year with their new membership, our new member, Ms. Weinberg, and returning member, Ms. Bolton. The first business was electing a chair, and I was humbled to accept the nomination. And the second, thank you all very much. I think it's because you trust me and not because nobody else wants to do it. That's what I tell myself, so thank you. We have an alcohol waiver from Fairview School that we'll vote on tonight. Excuse me. We approved our committee schedule. We're going to continue to meet on the third Friday of each month, except for the next meeting. So we're changing it. We will have our work plan to look at, at the next, after our next policy committee meeting, February 24th. Significantly, though, the superintendent had brought up the idea of looking at our policies sort of writ large and bringing in an outside outfit like Neola has done in the past, to look and see, are there gaps? Do we have gaps, for example, excuse me, in the space of security or equity or this? I don't think we do in those, but this is an example. So they'll come in, they'll look at our policies writ large, where are there gaps, if there are any? And the committee agreed that that was a valuable use of our time, so stay tuned. We continued to talk about summer school and Policy 2440, Extended Learning Opportunities. The current draft, and you'll see hopefully a finalized version at the next meeting or a meeting after that of the full board. On February 24th, we'll be discussing more changes, but a couple changes that we've all appreciated was removing the requirement to charge tuition to students required to participate in summer school. We added a reference to Extended School Year for Students with Disabilities Program and a paragraph that spelled out the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan. We talked about what grades would be eligible for summer school. Stay tuned for what we settle on. One thing we discussed was a district-wide summer reading program, however. If we don't offer summer school, let's say to first and second grade, which is what we're kind of looking at, then we would need, we all agree, we need something for reading. So a concerted reading program perhaps in the summertime. Policy 5410, Promotion and Retention, as you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time. We will continue to talk about it with our new board makeup, board committee makeup on February the 24th. Excuse me again, looking at what our promotion-retention policies are. We've had the president of the Teachers Union, Julie Sellers, there. We've had some really good discussions, I think, as far as, you know, what is the ethos of this group? Is it automatic promotion, which seemed to be the ethos of boards past, or are we somewhere different? Our committee feels we may be somewhere different, so stay tuned for what that language will look like going forward. Weapons, School Behavioral Threat Assessment, we're continuing to look at a new policy that would deal with these issues, based in some part at least on legislation at the state level that requires districts to have some codified School Behavioral Threat Assessment language. And I present the minutes as written.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. That wasn't even three minutes and 30 seconds. That's great. Any questions for the Chair of the Policy Committee? Okay, moving right along. Next, we're going to hear from Ms. Bolton for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. This as quickly as I can. First of all, I would like everyone to really read them very carefully, because there's an awful lot of specifics, particularly as it pertains to some of our priorities that Mr. Lindy mentioned beforehand. We met, we selected a chair, we are coming back with ideas for a work plan. We decided to meet on the third Fridays of the month, and the next meeting will be in February on the 24th. We continued the long discussion by, and presentations by the superintendent and the treasurer regarding contracts, those that are above $200,000 and those that were below $200,000, and how the contract review process is going, and some to be proposed to be eliminated, some to be extended, but all being very carefully evaluated. We also had our new member, Moffett, ask a little bit more about the process itself regarding contracts, new contracts, and the role that both the central office and also our sites, decentralized, if you will, school sites, the role they play, and whether or not the contracts that are being let and maintained fit within board policy as it pertains to minority businesses, women-owned, and also the local vendors getting particular points in order to move along in our, in our district. So the logic was shared, the high dollar, low dollar, and the need for RFPs properly to follow the law. There was a theme, again, the discussion between outsourcing and insourcing, which is going to be very much a part of whatever budget decisions we ultimately make this year. And also, we had extensive conversations about property, particularly property at Heinhold and Old Hoffman Iowa Street, as well as our Jacobs property. And Mr. Hoynes briefed us on the issues and the legalities of the sale of property and what the state requires regarding the sale of property and the role that charters and others might play. We also talked in terms of wanting to kind of liaison with our member who is on the Recreation Commission to talk about some of the properties where there's mutual share, there's mutual borderlines, so to speak, or recreation and CPS properties of one another. We also reemphasized the need for the board to see the master agreement regarding preschool promise and to see what has been proposed by the Cincinnati Preschool Promise folks and our draft back, if there's been one, and the need also to review that and give additional board direction. And then also want to make sure that we know that we have our written reports, monthly written reports posted. We had some updates on transportation. One of the areas for transportation that is still of great concern, and the superintendent spoke about it, is whether or not there's the technological capacity to have the kind of individual student cards available for us to be able to more properly monitor the usage. And then we had a financial audit update from Kevin Ashley, Director of Financial Reporting and Transparency.
Take all the time you need.
And then as well, the other business that we decided to be talking about besides the work plan was, if you will, how we are reviewing vendors and also the issues continuing regarding transportation, especially as it pertains to metro and on-time for yellow buses and not, no surprise to anyone, somebody on the committee keeps raising the issue for the last four years about the need for an internal van fleet for the district. Can't imagine who that is that keeps saying it. I submit and hope for approval, but beg everybody to read these carefully as we get ready to have a transformative budget.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Do we have any questions or discussion on the report from the Finance Committee? Dr. Moffett?
Who is this person that keeps asking these questions about?
That would be me. Four years. Internal van fleet. My God, it's going to happen.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any other questions for the Finance Committee Chair? Okay, hearing none. Vice President Craig?
I just wanted to make one clarification into what we said in minutes, which is that the review process that they're doing over the contracts is for contracts going into the next year and not to affect anything in the current budget that we're operating in. So just provide that extra clarity, which we did talk about in the budget and finance meeting.
Yeah, thank you for that. FY '24, not this one.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move to committee report number four from the Health and Safety Committee, and we will hear from Mrs. Weinberg.
Yes, thank you. So the Health and Safety Committee, we met on January the 23rd at 3:00 PM. The attendees were, of course, myself as the chairperson, Board Member Jones, and our new member, Board Member Morosky. And then, of course, we had our administration superintendent, Wright. We started off with the meeting, committee, excuse me, Member Jones nominated me to serve another term as the Chair of Health and Safety for the year of 2023. All of the committee members agreed with the nomination. I accepted the position, and we then moved on to the first agenda item, which included approval of the 2023 committee meeting schedule. Here, we talked about, I reminded everyone what was discussed at the regular business meeting on December the 14th about continuing to have health and safety as a committee. The board agreed to keep the committee. The Health and Safety Committee and Superintendent Wright agreed to conduct their meetings quarterly. Ms. Wright also informed the group that her chief of staff would be the liaison for the committee. So the committee discussed the above quarters and agreed that the quarters would be as followed: a meeting in January, March, a meeting in June, and then a meeting in September, being the last meeting for the year. Our December meeting would serve as our planning meeting, and the committee also agreed that the January meeting would count as their January quarterly meeting. We then discussed that safety is of the utmost importance and that the conversations need to continue about school resource officers, threats across the country, and any other additional topics that would pose a threat to, of course, our district. We set an action item. The committee would discuss a draft work plan at their March 2023 committee meeting, and here the committee advised that they would not repeat topics that were discussed in health and safety at the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole meeting. I also think the district's legislative liaisons, I'm having a very hard time today, very tongue-twisted. It's, I think, because I'm sitting next to you. So of course, I thanked liaisons George Glover and Eric Kearney for their work on the committee, and they will now be presenting at the Student Achievement Committee of the Whole meeting. We then went on to discuss a new business topic, which was security resources at schools, including metal detectors and the AED equipment and training for staffs and drills, et cetera. So here Superintendent Wright informed the committee that she's compiling this information and she's preparing a breakdown of the elements of all the schools. The action item that was listed within the minutes included that Superintendent Wright would present her information to the board in February and share the information with the committee at their meeting in March. Superintendent Wright also will look into staff being trained in areas of CPR, as well as CPR and first aid, looking further into metal detectors, defibrillators, and of course, mental health. Committee Member Morosky reported that a school behavioral threat assessment policy around weapons is being drafted, as he stated earlier, by Policy and Equity. And in terms of other business, there were no new items presented for other business. There were no speakers for Hearing of the Public, and I present the minutes as written.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weinberg. Do we have questions for the Health and Safety Committee? Okay.
Did you time that?
Say again.
How fast did I go? Did you time it?
Yeah, you did great. It was 3:01. Yeah, fastest one yet. And for, for both the public and for my colleagues up here, I am trying to balance not wanting to rush through important content, and also, the, all the committees are available in video on YouTube and are open to the public and are summarized in the minutes. And so I think where we can have some efficiency wins, great, but I also want to make sure that we give airtime to the things that matter most. So I'm welcome, open to feedback on all of that. Last but not least, we're going to hear from our Ad Hoc Attendance Boundaries Committee Chair, Dr. Moffett.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak last. My feedback is, since we saved a little bit of time, I'm going to try my hardest to rush, but hopefully I won't get that reminder that it's the three-minute limit. We did have a great ad hoc meeting on January the 26th. Moving forward, our meeting will be, their next meeting will be February the 23rd at 4 o'clock. Please tune in if you're able to watch it on video. We had a summation from the administration regarding the presentation that she's been able to provide to us multiple times. So if you didn't watch it at the ad hoc meeting, it was at several other meetings as well for considerations for programming. She did, conducted a very thorough program audit of the programs within our district at the various schools, so please tune into that. We spent a considerable amount of time discussing those summations, each committee member, well, let me start by saying, Board Member Jones nominated, or nominated me to run again as the chair, and I accepted that, so thank you for that trust. But we did spend a considerable amount of time sharing each board member's suggestions regarding the considerations that were presented. I don't know if they would like to add anything, but I think over our, overall, every one of us was very, very supportive of some of the findings that we found. There was significant discussion around Spencer, there was significant discussion around W. Gifford. There was also discussion around building usage and land usage and any potential changes for that. We had some community members that shared their perspectives of the programming and what they've experienced. And so we had, we didn't have a formalized Hearing of the Public, but we did have community input intermittently throughout the meeting. Please feel free to look at those videos and minutes. Additionally, we talked about the work plan, and Board Member Bolton suggested that we have regular updates, since we are working with administration and the committee to make recommendations to the board. We offer regular updates at the board section that's for board updates regularly on what we're finding, so that we're not waiting until May to make suggestions, but yet we're actually making those suggestions. yet we're actually making those suggestions timely to sunset and potentially sunset our committee in May. So we will update our work plan accordingly, but right now, we've got a skeletal with a little bit more filled-in information to provide updates for the months of March and April. Again, we were reminded that the charge of the committee is to work on boundaries, and so at the next meeting, we will be talking about elementary boundaries. That is what the charge of the committee was for, so we will be discussing those with regard to the program audit. And, let's see, I'm gonna invite my fellow colleagues on the committee to share any summations that may have caught your eye, if you'd like, that we offered individually. Did I summarize it pretty well? Well, Member Bolton, did you want to summarize anything?
No, thank you.
And so I submit these, say again, I'm sorry.
You did a good job.
I submit these as written. Please go online and check them out. The next meeting will be February the 23rd at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moffett. Do people have questions or discussion on anything from the Ad Hoc Attendance Boundaries Committee? Mr. Maraski.
Just overall, a couple of comments. First comment, I just want to give a shout out to the Ad Hoc Committee, and I was kind of bullish about the creation of this committee, and it's really cool to see light this work moving at the pace it's moving, the community's involved, been talked about for years, and to see it formalized. So thanks to the Chair for your leadership in the committee. I also think it's worth mentioning the irony, or lack thereof, of the fact that our fastest gold medalist member was also the fastest presenter for board minutes. The irony did not escape me, and I just wanted to say that for the record.
That's good.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski. Other questions or discussions on the Ad Hoc Committee Report? Ms. Bolton.
I would follow up on what the Chair mentioned, that it would be good for us to have some sort of cycle of reporting, recommendations where indeed the superintendent and Administration and whoever kind of are in agreement with where the committee is, and that we try to work that out, because there's still some issues that could still impact the 24 budget or impact some other major decisions regarding staffing and what have you. So see if the President would can find a way that we can do that either in writing and submit a report rather than discuss it in session, but I think that would be useful. And I know board members are interested in some of the things that are happening within ad hoc.
Ms. Bolton, would you say that one more time about the ways that could be helpful?
Yeah, I think it's important that the work that's being done in ad hoc, much of it precedes it, as Mr. Maraski mentioned earlier. But right now, you have the superintendent and some community members and the committee itself working through recommendations from the superintendent and the concluded audit, as well as ideas being brought by the committee, as well as ideas that have not been implemented but still are of interest. So I think the recommendation to find a way either in writing or at a board meeting periodically to present those so that the board is aware of the developments that are occurring, especially when we have consensus in the Administration and the committee, to bring it. That way, we're not waiting until May, and there is an opportunity to still inform decisions in staffing and budgeting perhaps for this coming year. I think it'd be great to do that.
I think just a point of clarification on my own, and I think that sounds important to make sure that there aren't unnecessary roadblocks in the way of doing important work. I also, if we have processes that already exist that could do some of this for us, I'm all for not reinventing the wheel. And so my, I think my wondering is, if there's a recommendation from a committee, our standard process is that comes through one of these committee reports, and that we would then discuss and vote on that recommendation in a meeting. And we could do that two or three times a month, as frequently as we needed to. Would that work for what you're suggesting?
Absolutely. To my way of thinking, I think it would work. I just know that we've experienced over the last three years some confusion and indecision about what's an action item and what's a recommendation. So I think if we could come to terms with that definition and say, do any of the committees, but if we can say this is a recommendation and we actually vote on it or get that information, I think that makes much more sense, as long as we can, as a group, settle on what is a recommendation, what's an action item.
Yeah, I think, I think anything that the committee is recommending that the board adopt should have the word "action" in it. Either recommended action is fine, or action requested, or action colon, but I think then we, anytime you all have met and have a recommendation you want to make, we have a process that's in place to review that, give people a chance to ask questions about that, and then make sure that people, my hunch is, because you all are so thoughtful about this and are asking such good questions about what the Administration thinks the right plan is, that any actions that are recommended will be pretty non-controversial, but they would be flagged as such in the report, and then we could talk about it together.
I think, I think also, additionally...
Dr. Moffett, one second. Were you done, Ms. Bolton?
I would just follow up about that, in that as we were kind of racing through and getting this stuff done, that I think in other changes that, and as we revamp sort of our meetings, I think the Administration and whomever needs to be able to post committee minutes in a timely manner. Currently, they are not, and it's because everybody's busy, but I think if we're gonna not take so much time in the meetings, I think we should have posting of the minutes rather quickly. And I would also suggest, if you say that about recommendations and action, I think rather than us regurgitating what happened at the meeting, which takes a lot of time and you can't really explain it, seems to me that we could make minutes and have them, you know, that, what we're talking about, how you pass stuff, the consent, the galley consent, and then instead, the Chair of each committee might present what's been recommended or the action item, or the themes that are important for the board to kind of contemplate if there's. So I just think there's a way to reformat this whole committee process.
Dr. Moffett.
So with regard to what you spoke about before, I think that what we're proposing needs to be formally presented to the board and not just mentioned in an action item. I think we're talking about major changes to programming, potentially major changes to programming, potentially major changes to audit, and that needs longer than a three-minute mention. I'm sorry, I just do, I think we are working in tandem with the Administration and the community, and it, for significant input from the community, from the committee and the Administration, it doesn't need, it needs a presentation. So if Board Matters is the place for that, then by all means, make space there, but it doesn't need to just be a mention in a rushed three-minute presentation. So what I'm asking for, which is what I believe that we discussed and I mentioned, is that we have a formalized space to present our findings, whether that be Administration presenting them or the committee presenting them, but we are talking about making significant potential changes that need time.
Yeah, I think that point's well taken, and I think that would be a great thing to do for a presentation. And I think that these board, things of larger magnitude, I think we should make time for them, and also, if there are smaller things that are moving more quickly, we have a process for that, too. The Superintendent wanted to get it worded, and then Vice President Craig, or did you want to go first, Vice President? Okay.
Okay, thank you, Board President. Just a quick question, and this is for Board Member Bolton. I heard the comment about the Administration posting the committee minutes earlier. I wanted to make sure I heard that right, because I don't think that we've had the responsibility of posting the minutes, so if that's the expectation, I need to make sure that we're clear on that, because I don't think that's been the case for Administration.
Well, we can get that cleared up then.
Okay, thank you.
When you say get that cleared up, my understanding is our board office has done it in the past.
Well, that's an issue of, too, but we can, that's all internal.
I think we could, I'm just not sure I totally follow, Ms. Bolton.
Access to the website and those sorts of things. If it's on the board staff, it's on the board staff, but other parts of minutes are not. But yes, on these committee, I'll stand corrected if it's our two people that are supposed to be doing it.
That's been, that's been my experience so far. We can, we can look into that, too. Yeah, Mrs. Weinberg?
So I just wanted to follow up with Board Member Bolton. So are you asking for the minutes to be posted onto the website in a timely manner? Wanted to make sure for clarification, so if there is a way that that can be done.
So for clarity, so that I can be clear, because I'm pushing the team to make sure that we're addressing wherever the concerns are, and we know who's responsible for what, so we have to be sure. So all of our minutes are posted on Board Docs. All of us have access to post those minutes on Board Docs, and we have not had the responsibility of posting any minutes for the board, so for any of the meetings. So if that's an expectation that should be on Administration that has not been, we just want to clarify that so that we're all working together to get the information there. So that, I heard, that was the first time that I heard that, so I just wanted to make sure.
And probably out of my element, but I'm just saying, there's one thing about posting it on Board Docs, and there's another thing about getting it on the website. If you look up committee minutes, it's not very timely.
Right.
So I don't know, if that's us, we'll tell our folks to do it faster, especially if we're spending less time, that we've now been taking up on all the time we just rushed through. But yeah, whatever, I think it needs to be posted in a timely manner on the website.
Yeah, I think my understanding is that our board office has taken care of writing up a draft of the minutes, sending those out to committee chairs for their review, and then sending them to me so that I can see if there's any action that's requested and that that's clear, and that then they go out on Board Docs. I'm not, I'm not clear on any other parts of that process, but...
Mrs. Weinberg?
So I think for clarification, so I just pulled up on the CPS website, and if you go to the board minute meetings, meeting minutes, excuse me, so it showcases our minutes. So I think, Board Member Bolton, you're making, you want to make sure that the meeting minutes are there in a timely fashion. So that, I think that's what it is. So we need to decide who's actually posting these on the actual CPS website.
I see. So this would be a case where something is on Board Docs...
Yes, but it may not be on the actual website.
But is not on the CPS website.
Yes.
And I don't know who does that, actually. Yeah, Dr. Moffett?
So additionally, where I, I don't know, I don't want to speak for Board Member Bolton, but where I have had concerns are in, our staff, the board staff typically waits until they get everything before they put it up. So what I have noticed is that the committee reports are ready, but they're waiting for, so that things are not posted in a hodgepodge fashion. Some things are up there, some things are not. So that, that is problematic. I've also had some concerns around the links, the committee meetings, and we've ironed out a little bit of that, but they're on YouTube, they're not necessarily on the website. You know, we, we need to get some clarification so that everything is public knowledge and it's accessible timely. I think we have internally within ourselves had questions about, do things go up on Wednesday? Do things go up on Thursday? If things have to go to you, then we have a deadline as committee chairs. You know, so I think there's some things that we need to work out internally so that the information is accessible to the public timely. I don't think that that's the case right now.
Thank you, that's helpful. Superintendent, you had asked about clarity. How do you feel? Is there more things we could make clear?
I think that we'll go back to the overall team. I think that we want to make sure that we talk to the board staff and our team as well. As I am understanding, the information is up on Board Docs, which the public is accessible to on Board Docs. What I noticed on the website, to Board Member Weinberg's point, there is an additional link, which is generally not the case, but there is an additional set of minutes that are also attachments on an additional page. Usually, when you're using Board Docs, you click Board Docs, it takes you directly to the information, and you're not putting it into different places. So we'll follow up so that we will know where, wherever that question comes from, but the first time that we're hearing it at that, at that point, I want to make sure we clarify, because we want to make sure that we're responsive. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask about the report, but I want to go last. Member Jones?
Yeah, I'm trying to absorb this conversation. I do think, I think there are some valid points being made about the need for timeliness of uploading this stuff. A lot of what we're talking about now has to do with board procedures, and I think, you know, in terms of where we are in relooking our bylaws and things may address that. And so I would much prefer to talk about how we get started with that than to spend our time tonight talking about the process itself. But I do understand what people are saying, and I also believe that, you know, we have to look at how we operate internally around that and to provide whatever assistance and support we can give to our staff, given that there are only two of them. Okay, so that's it.
Thank you. Member Jones? Vice President Craig?
So actually, a question going back to the Ad Hoc Committee, and that is around the recommendations that would be, you know, what I kind of heard in the restoration of the minutes was that there would be some recommendations that might come on a regular basis for changes. There are others that might require some substantial presentation of information, and so I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding kind of that there may be a difference between something that is either something that's of note versus something that is a substantial change that would be coming through, and is that what we were talking about, having them present on? Because I do think if it's merely like, we're looking at this issue, we're looking at that issue, some of those things may not require as substantial of a presentation as opposed to we're revamping an entire program, or something that might draw folks' concern or consideration, like we had with the prior discussion about, you know, things that were just thoughts that folks took as we're doing it right now, may require some explanation at a, at a board meeting to really formalize that understanding, but, so I just wanted to make sure there was that clarity point there.
So I'll offer some, some clarification. I think the short answer to your question is yes. This committee was, was formed to discuss boundary lines for elementary schools. High schools is kind of secondary in that you're gonna have to talk about high schools as well, but it was to discuss the boundary lines of some of our elementary schools. The Superintendent offered the opportunity for us to include an audit that she was conducting last year, so we decided to wait and talk about attendance boundary lines with respect to the audit and programming, that we could have a pretty thorough picture of what the programming's looking like and the boundary lines at the schools. We also talked about it with regard to transportation. So that's kind of how that the Ad Hoc Committee formed, was about, hey, transportation was an issue, neighborhood schools, magnet schools, and then it became, let's see which magnet schools are really magnet schools. So there was the audit, and then it's like, let's make some recommendations. So the purpose of the Ad Hoc Committee was to make recommendations moving forward. To me, all of that is presentable. All of that is going to require board input. We want to work with Administration and the community for recommendations that we've kind of irred out, gotten a consensus, and then we're presenting it to you with an explanation, not just, hey, take this and vote on it. It's, do you all agree on some of the things that we're finding? We're spending a significant amount of time talking about this, and it does, it, to me, needs an equal amount of time in consensus with the entire board. So moving forward, when we're talking about presenting, I would imagine, we said board matters, but I would love for it to be under a sign, a time where it's given consideration. Most of what we're talking about moving forward will be just that. It will be beyond action items. It will be significant recommendations, beyond items for you to just know about. It will be significant recommendations. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, I guess, I guess my question is more about, are there gonna be things that are gonna be coming as the recommendations that we're talking about that are things for us to then take action on, or are we talking about also things that we're just alerting us about? Because I do know, like specifically, for instance, the Superintendent's ideas around when she did the program audit and some of the confusion that happened as a result, might be something we clarify at a board meeting that may not be necessarily any action items for the board to take, versus, yeah, maybe some significant planning and changes of how the district will be shaped and helped. will be shaped and how programming will work that will come out of the committee that would absolutely require a nice thorough discussion. And so I think maybe that's, for me, a little bit of the differentiation between what would might be in a committee minutes where you're really updating on just that particular clarification point or that kind of deal versus something that would be presented as a larger discussion for the board to have. So that's what I'm kind of hearing you say, is that with those larger things that are things that we would have to vote on or take some action on, you would want them to be something we present in a larger discussion?
Yes, and I'm, I'm assuming that would be under board matters. I, I don't know, and that was what the discussion was, is where would that fall? A committee report would be exactly what I'm summarizing, what I did here, three minutes, but we would also need space for presentations based on what we found.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I think mine, anybody else who is, I want to hear, has, has a chance to go. I think mine is a thank you. I know what, what's come up a couple of different times is the, the need for a work plan with an end date for the committee and a clear scope with when a set of final recommendations would come. And I think as I read through the minutes, it's all in there, and I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly. What I saw in the, in the committee report was that the committee would sunset at the end of June, and that would come, we wouldn't have to do it necessarily at a last meeting in June, we could do it in a couple of meetings along the way, but what would come out of the committee is a series of recommendations that the board would vote on. And so I just wanted to check, am I missing any of that? Did I get any of that wrong? But if I got that right, I think I want to say thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I need a motion to accept all five committee reports, please.
No move.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, is there a second?
Second.
Great, I think we've had our discussion, but last call, any other comments or questions on the reports? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Committee reports are adopted. Okay, we're going to move in a second to the presentation, but if it's okay with my board colleagues, we did have one person show up for hearing of the public a little after we moved past it. We, we actually started on time today, so it's not super surprising to me that we, we, somebody might have been surprised by that as well. But is it, would anybody opposed to us inviting one speaker for our hearing of the public? Hearing, no objections? Okay, President Sellers, thank you.
Thank you for this consideration. I wanted to first talk about, there's going to be a series of abatement meetings coming up later this month in February, and I think it's really important that all of you are aware of it and, and possibly make time so you can attend some of these meetings. The first one, we are having a planning meeting at the CFT office with a council member to request a presentation in the Equity Committee on Tax Abatements, who chairs that committee. But on 1:00 PM on Thursday, February 14th, at City Hall, the Equity Committee meeting is going to be talking about the abatement expansions in Cincinnati. I am calling this meeting and asking people to come for the love of CPS, because it's going to, these new abatement policies and the new ordinance could have a huge impact on the budget of CPS and the funding that we are receiving through the taxpayers. And as you all know, we don't get the majority of the portion of our finances from the state, we get them from local property taxes. On 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 21st, here in the ILC, we are convening a public education event around abatements. And we are having several different experts coming in to talk about the impact of abatements. Currently, and I did just recently receive this chart from the current county auditor for CPS properties, and of the abated values, right now currently, we have $2.5 billion of properties that are abated. That's the total amount, 2.5 billion. One billion of that is residential, and there is no pilot payment made. They just get that residential with nothing that is owed to us. And the other 1.5 billion is commercial with a pilot payment, and this pilot payment agreement is going to be expiring next year, and we really do need to get in front of it. But I think what we really need to expect as city taxpayers, not just the Board of Education, but our city, needs to expect a total analysis of the impact on the CPS budget and all non-abated property taxpayers. Because as you know, if some people are paying less, because we have a lot of our levies or fixed some levies, that if some people pay less, other people pay more. But we have nothing in place about the residential. And if you saw Exhibit A from the Residential CRA program, they are expanding that, the number of areas for abatements exponentially. There will be 36 neighborhoods who will get the lift, which is 15 years of abatements. The 10, there will be 10 neighborhoods who will get 12, 10 to 12 years of abatements, and then six that will receive just five to eight years of abatements, depending if it is a remodeling or new construction. There have been comments made by people from city council saying that if we could, we would give every single property owner in the city an abatement. None of these residential expansions have any kind of requirement for a residency clause that you have to live in that property for a certain amount of time. It is basically going to be the flipper's dream, and people from all over the country will be coming to Cincinnati to make big profits. So we need to get, so we are asking that there is, and what we're going to ask from the city, and this was promised to us before they included all of the additional TIF districts, we want to get the, all of the abated properties and the amount of money going into the TIF districts. How much money are we paying and how is this going to impact CPS? And there needs to be a real analysis. People jump on board, but people don't know what the impact is going to be for this. And so I just want to make sure that you all, as board members, are aware of these expansions and to know what the consequences will be to the people who are already full taxpayers in our city. And then I also wanted to say that since the, the board retreat, schools have received their title budgets, and so there are positions that are now being reinstated based on those board budgets. It's been really very disjointed, but so we are getting some of those positions back. There is also an adjustment for the specialist formula, but I still don't know if there was an adjustment to keep the itinerant banned in the elementary schools, and we are working through that. But the one thing that is the most troublesome is how they did the formula for the four through, four through eighth grade. And I have a document from our, from 2004, and it was from our contract, that there was a levy passed and to, and it went into effect in our contract in 2004. One-third, two-mils out of six-mil increase was the levy was to reduce class sizes. That levy is still in effect, and we should still be getting those reductions, especially in the four to eight. And so the contract was misread. We have all of our contracts from all of the years, and now this is making a huge impact, which is impacting some of the, a lot of the four to eight, four to six students, fourth grade to sixth grade, being in overloaded classrooms starting on day one with over 30 kids in the room. And I know that that is no intention of anybody here on this board. I know that is not the intention of any taxpayer in this city. They did pass the levy to make sure that we have reduced class sizes. We have never gone above the 28 except for overload that can say, kids, classrooms can only be overloaded up to this point, but at, at 29, it's supposed to trigger, let's get this next teacher hired. And so I, this is still an area that we have not worked out, but I think that we need to really, this week, focus on how are we going to make sure that we're not losing half of our four to six teachers? They're hard to find, and nobody wants their student or their child in a classroom above 30 students. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President Sellers. So we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is going to be a presentation from our superintendent on teacher recruitment.
Thank you. So this is absolutely an exciting time of year. This is when a lot of work begins to happen to set the stage for where we go next school year. So we want to spend just a little bit of time talking about where we are currently with recruitment, especially with teacher recruitment, and to answer questions that we may have available from the board about that recruitment process. So as we prepare to frame our conversation, thought this would be a great place for us to start, and thinking about what the current landscape of teachers looks like in our district, as well as our breakdown of students in the district. And so as we look at that, we see we have over 6,200 employees. When we look at the breakdown, we see what the ethnic, ethnic breakdown is, as well as male, female, so forth and so on, in terms of our breakdown. And the same for our students. So as we begin to talk about where we're looking to focus next, we're doing that with the background information of this is what our current landscape looks like. So we have four key areas when we begin to think about demographics, and we want to start first with our population in the city. From, for, from 2010 to 2020, the population in the city grew by 4.17%, which there had not been growth in the city at that time since 1950. So it's relevant that we are growing and growing quickly, and as we grow in the city, we often, we also feel that impact in the school district. I think the next point of information that's really relevant is looking at the teachers that left the district within the first five years of teaching, and that was from 2016 to 2019. That's where this particular data comes from, which is not quite five years, we'll correct that in terms of the numbers, but the data is actually the same. I will share here that this is pretty consistent with what you see across the country as we think about the challenges in teacher recruitment and the, and the type of vacancies we're seeing, and, and it's really, really everywhere when you start thinking, talking about it, the teachers that are coming into the profession are not making the decisions to stay as long in the profession as they have before. So while this says 70%, and it shows those three years or three years respectively, it, the, the percentage is actually the same. The other area that we really think is, is truly important, if we go back one slide, now, we did not break down the student population by male or female. However, we see our student population for African-American right around 61%. We also know that, the data also tells us that most students that identify as multiracial, if they were not identifying as multiracial, many of them identify as African-American. So with that, when we look at those areas, we see a large population of our students, of course, the greatest population of our students in the district are African-American. Our student, our teacher population for African-American is around, around 21%. However, when we look at, and again, this is a national challenge, however, it is something that we want to look at in Cincinnati Public Schools, the African-American male teachers in the district is 4%. So of that 20% or about 21% that are African-American, only 4% of them are male. And the other area that has quickly become a growing area for the city and for our school district is our ELL population, so our English language learners in that population. Currently, ELL make up about 9% of our student population, and that's a growth of 85%. So as we look at where we're going next, in terms of recruitment and a focus around recruitment, we want to do that with these areas also in mind. So strategic initiatives as we prepare for the recruitment season and recruitment cycle, we know that we have, we have, we've been recruiting, we don't ever stop recruiting, but there is an increase as we start recruiting and preparing for the next school year. So this is the time that that begins to happen. So as you see the strategic initiatives, we've taken all of the feedback, we've done roundtable discussions, we've had conversations with the board, we've had conversations with our team, and these identify really the top seven areas in terms of recruitment where we really want to spend some time so that we're targeting our populations as we are increasing the number of individuals that are coming to the district to teach. One of those really starts with the way that we're looking at our process in terms of application and onboarding, the overall efficiency within the department. There are several even of, of board members that have shared, we have individuals that apply, and not only do they not get a response or not get an interview, but they don't get a response. So really working with our systems to make sure that there is follow-up for that, calling it out because it's true, but then putting the system in place to make sure that we address it. The leveraging data for recruitment and placement, that's not been the strength for us in human resources at all. So as we start thinking about data and data that may be available, we're at a bit of a disadvantage on being able to share that data and talk about it and use it in a metric kind of way. Looking at our current teaching pipelines and creating new pipelines for teaching. So we currently have in the district a pipeline for a pair of professionals to go into teaching that has given some positive responses, but I know that there are opportunities for more growth in that area, and that's an area that we want to double down in. At the same time, that's not the only location, so making sure that we're looking at all of the available opportunities for pipelines, so that we're also looking at what are some of those Grow Your Own programs? From our high school programs, we know we have a program currently with Miami University at Aiken that is a Grow Your Own type program. This is the second year of that where we're looking to take high school students and grow them through that process into teaching positions in our district, but there is more for us to do in this area. Improving our overall market and how we are directing our work toward targeted audiences. So we've shared the areas that we're looking at and really where we want to make sure that we're increasing recruitment, but we also have to make sure that our marketing work is aligned to those areas as well as a part of that overall recruitment. There is a huge opportunity for communication to make sure that we're, that we are, you know, in the 21st century, and so we're doing as much as we can with technology as well, expanding our opportunities by using technology. And the last but not least, that is still equally important, is the partnerships that we have with universities. We know, and it's the same at University of Cincinnati, which happens to be the one that's the closest to us, but we know that our university systems across the country are seeing fewer individuals go into teaching as a profession when they go to college to start with. So everyone is really exploring how we're having those hand-in-hand partnerships so that we're capturing students to start with, we're really getting them inducted into the teaching process before they graduate from college. And so after they graduate from college, they sign up and, and come to be a part of our organization. So basic goals, we only listed three, kind of in alignment with where we are looking to go with making sure that we do a few things really well versus going really wide in the work that we're looking at. And our goal always has to be 100% staffing higher schools by the first day of school. That is the goal, to make sure, I see that look on your face, Board Member Bolton, when I say that. But that is the goal, and that is not a goal that we're going to move away from because we do believe that it is possible. We have, we work in partnership with CFT to make sure that we have our transfer rounds within the district. That simply means that individuals in the district have an opportunity to fill other positions or vacancies in the district before we begin to open those positions up to other individuals. We've added some metrics there. Our goal is by the time we end May to have our positions that are available 80% staffed, such that we're at 90% by the end of June, and by the end of July, before our students come back in the middle of, of August, we're at 100%. So that's our goal. It's also important that we look at our teacher acceptance rate. So we are, we offer a lot, we give a lot of offers when we start thinking about individuals that are coming into the district and how we're looking to hire them, but we want to increase that acceptance rate so that we do it sooner, because if we're able to get them accepted sooner, get them connected to a school sooner, they become a part of that school community, and then they're. that school community, and then they're able to begin to see themselves teaching in the school building. The next we want to look at is how we're diversifying our pool, overall our hiring pool. So, we talked about in the different areas, making sure that we're looking at POC, our people of color, our males, male teachers of color as well, how we're looking at our English language learners, our bilingual staff, and so increasing those opportunities. We're completing our university partnership conversations this month. We've had really great conversations with them, and we're continuing to do that. And the marketing campaigns that go along with that actually did, we've set up those through the end of January. And at this point, what you have seen in the presentation, we have our hiring calendar, our hiring, our recruitment calendar, recruitment process. And then there's also the opportunity for alternative certification, and that is an area for individuals that have a degree, their degree may not be in education, but they do have a degree. And so, we want to look at how we are able to use that as a resource as well. I already referenced making sure that we're decreasing the percentage of our openings, so this is hard to staff. So, we have schools that we've identified as hard-to-staff schools. We do do that in partnership with the union, so we're going through that process right now. Many of them right now are high schools, there are a few that are elementary schools that are hard to staff also. And what that simply does for us is it allows us to hire teachers for those buildings while we're still going through the transfer round process. And so, that's something that's done in partnership with CFT. So, our areas of focus, you heard me talk about hard-to-staff, and I don't think when we see any of these areas, there is a lot of concern there. I think initially, when I started looking at the data for staffing for us, one that was not as popular as I've seen in the past, it really has been a challenge for us, is English language arts. So, we know that math and STEM, anything in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics have been areas of concern. Montessori, of course, we have a large number, of course, of our Montessori certified schools. Physical education is another that's been a challenge, and generally, special education is a challenge across the country. The one that's unique for us is English language arts. That's generally not one that is as much of a challenge as it is right now. And we talked already about our minorities, our persons of color. We want to make sure that our students are also seeing individuals as well that are in classrooms that look like them, are bilingual and multilingual educators. As we, right now, we are in the process of really determining what the vacancies will be for this year. So, about two weeks ago, all of our teaching staff were sent a, sent information that would have them share with us what their plans were moving into next year. But we added these two areas because, the last two bullets, because it gives you an idea or a frame of reference for what we've hired previously. So, for the beginning of this school year, there were three hundred and seventy-four positions, approximate positions, that were available or vacant for the beginning of the school year. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we hired three hundred and twenty-one teachers that year as well. So, it gives you an idea of generally where we hover in terms of the number of positions that we need to hire for the district. These are some upcoming dates, these are also available on our website, but we want to share it with everyone, because one of the things that we do believe that's really important is everyone is responsible for helping us with recruitment. I mean, it's important that everyone knows what we're doing in terms of recruitment, how we're able to talk about our district and talk about the stories that we have that are available in our schools, how we encourage those to apply for positions that are in the district. We're talking about teaching positions right now, but we could have this very same conversation for any other position that would be vacant in the district. So, we have our specific CPS events. If you notice, it's a combination of large events where we are all together in one location, small events, there's events where we have individuals that are able to come in and sit in small groups with our hiring team. And then we have our non-CPS events. And so, non-CPS events are a combination of events that are happening in the city already, as well as recruitment events that are happening across the country. And so, we identify those locations based on what it appears that their vacancies would be, what it appears that their teaching population would be, and then align that to our vacancies. So, and we send our teams out to participate in those. So, we do want to make sure that we share this and that we are sharing that broadly so that we know that recruitment is something that continues in the district. So, how to apply? And we've added this year, which is really important. Of course, we can apply online, but we want to, and all of our applications are online. If you go to cps-k-12.org backslash career, you're able to go into our hiring portal and apply right there. But the one piece that's also important is our team is available. If individuals come to our district office, we have individuals that are set up already to start the interview process, to help them determine what may be best for them. Everybody might be, people may be looking for different things. So, sometimes just the application online is not enough. It takes a conversation to really help them determine where they're looking to go next. And last but not least, this is really pretty exciting, because it, I do believe with everything that I have, you know, so goes CPS, so goes Cincinnati. And when we are looking at individuals that are coming to our city, they're, they're coming into our school district, they're not just coming into the school district, they're becoming a part of Cincinnati. And so, therefore, it's important that our community takes a, an active role in, in hiring our individuals that are coming to our city and also keeping them here. So, what we have that we are launching is a strategic partnership survey. If you go to this particular link, what it opens up for you is if you are a business owner or a partner in the city, and there is anything that you can do to offer any special perks to our teachers as they're looking to come into the school district, this is the place that you would go. So, you go into this link, complete the information that's there, and then our team will, our team will follow up, because we do want to know, you know, it is, I said this earlier today when I was meeting with the team, with education, it's become a buyer's market. I remember thirty years ago, it was a shopper's market, you know, a shopper, it's become a shopper's market. I remember thirty years ago, it was a buyer's market, you know? So, as you think about schools, you were going into school buildings, and individuals, principals had the selection of who could come to their schools. Now, it's the other way around. And so, those that are looking for school buildings, they're looking for schools that speak to them, they have an opportunity to shop in a variety of locations. So, it's important that we set ourselves apart and that we set the standard for what it is that we're looking for.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. Do board members have any questions or reactions to the superintendent's presentation on teacher recruitment? Can't tell who's raising their hand. Anybody? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, thank you for this, I really appreciate it. And I'm glad to see a little bit less emphasis on what I would call quotas, as I saw in the one, the, the report from last year. I think that's great. I have just a couple of quick questions. When we talk in terms of teachers, what are we talking about?
So, we're actually talking about classroom teachers.
Okay.
And so, we're, when we talk about classroom teachers, we're talking about core, English, math, science, social studies, and non-core. So, we're, we're not in terms of teachers, talking about those ancillary positions, speech-language pathologists, school social workers, and that kind of thing. We're talking classroom teachers.
Okay, classroom teachers, that's great. And then, when you had that one chart that was up there that showed the breakdown in the teachers, and then it said employees, was that, if we could go back to that, I was, the employees, six thousand or so, and on the other, the left, yeah, I think that's it. See where it says that, teacher breakdown, and then CPS employees? That's not a different, it's, that's not a different column of overall employees, is it?
It's not a different column, but I will tell you, when I looked at this number, as I'm sitting here, it gave me pause. I want to make sure that I didn't put the wrong first number there, because I, in thinking about it, if I want the team to verify that my first number is accurate, in terms of teachers, just to verify that my first number there is accurate. They'll do that while you're asking me the other question.
Then, the, a couple of the other real quick things, I appreciate it, seems like retention is just as important for us as recruitment.
Absolutely.
And that's important. And I know in the CFT contract, there are all kinds of, at least that's my memory from a couple of years ago, there's all kinds of opportunities for additional pay and indeed kind of headhunting if possible, or getting more senior folks, or I think it's the VIP program that's in the CFT contract about getting people to be visiting instructors or something. Are we using all the opportunities that, that are in the CFT contract?
So, we are. And one other area that we, we used last year, as I understand, there are a lot of questions around it, but it's something that we want to go back to our union team and talk about for this year, is there was also the opportunity last year for a small finding bonus for individuals that actually found individuals that were hired in the district that stayed in the district for an amount of time, they actually got a finder's fee, so to speak. That's the best way that I can say it. But there are other opportunities that are included in there that we, that definitely we want to use as a part of the recruitment, recruitment of this overall staff.
That would be great, and two, two things, the, I know we've gotten a chart last year or two years before of the employee breakdown by group, meaning this, this is the demographic breakdown for administrators. This is the demographic, and that shows somewhat of a different tone to this, that's why I was interested in the teachers. The other piece of it too is, the growth in Cincinnati is great, but yeah, that's, it's, it's happened, and that we're, we have to be ready for continuing growth. But I know we, we really want our kids to be able to see people that look like them, and I totally buy that. But I also, every chance I get, while the school district community internally might be minority-majority, this district is not. And so, this is, we have to always couch the way that we talk about this, I think, in a way that is, is, is clear. You know, it's, it's a, it's a interesting, and it's, it's revelatory too about what we need to be doing as well. But thanks for this, this is great, appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think the important part here as well to Board Member, to Board Member Bolton's point, as we think about recruiting teachers, it is not an either-or, it's a both-and. And so, as a district, we have not done a concerted effort in those other areas. And so, we want to make sure that while we're recruiting all, we're also making sure that we're doing some concerted recruitment in the other areas as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other comments, questions on the, the presentation from the superintendent? Vice President Craig.
So, again, I want to thank you also for the presentation. I think it's a lot of good information. I had a couple of questions, and then kind of one quick thought on it. And I think one is with regard to our ELL students and that growth, and I don't think we're going to see a lack of growth in the future either. I think we're going to continue to keep seeing more and more and more. And I think that speaks a little bit to the need for folks who under, who both can educate the ELL students, but also can communicate with the ELL students in a more natural form for them. And I think that's one of those things, again, when we think about reaching out to find different teachers and finding folks who want to go into the teaching profession, some of those skill sets that are necessary for an evolving district of diversity. So, I think that's an important thought to keep in mind. I wanted to also ask kind of a question with regard to, I think, where, where Member Bolton was going, and some of the breakdown of, and how we're recruiting, and with that thought in mind, is that we know that there are a number of programs within our local schools, our local colleges and universities around us, that have really focused on building diversity up through the educational programs. But I also think there may be an effort for us to somewhat lead or champion those opportunities to encourage folks earlier than that, than that starting point, because I think if we're only talking to them, or only recruiting them in the, you know, while they're in college or in their last years of college, that we're probably missing some of those opportunities. I know we have a couple of programs that we've already started doing to build a next generation of teachers, but I'm thinking about this and that concept of how do we get into the conversation with some of our local colleges and universities to, as they're recruiting folks, that we present this great opportunity for people to stay here when they come from outside, or if they're coming to UC, or coming to Xavier, from outside of the local area? And so, I think, I don't know if we've started to build those partnerships up with the departments there, the educational colleges in the, at the different universities around us?
Yes, so, we have actually started the conversations across the board with all of our universities in the area about the pipeline programs. And so, we have a couple of already established partnerships where really it's more through the internships that are happening in our school buildings. We go out to the, to the, to the, to the schools and, and do partnership with the professors that are in the programs as well. But we do believe that there is an opportunity to expand it, and expanding it in a way that we're also looking before the students declare, you know, what they, they're looking to do as juniors or seniors, that we're kind of able to help them navigate some of that versus waiting until they've already identified.
I think that's great. I think the other question around that line as well, and again, speaking a little bit to what Board Member Bolton talked about with retention, is the opportunities for folks who are within our district, who are serving in other capacities to become either those alternative pathways, or figuring out other ways to get them the necessary licensure, and another number of teachers, especially in some of the specific areas that want to be a licensed teacher, but the process isn't, you know, they're, they have to then do that process as well. And so, we're, they're going through those steps, now we did it with the paraprofessionals, they're going through some of those steps. But I guess, is there, you know, are we thinking of ways to encourage, or thinking of ways to make that, to provide more support for some of those areas? Because I do think that's the other, when we're thinking about programming at different schools, that's the only way we get these programming, is if the folks who are there doing it are able to become licensed teachers, to be able to do that long-term and to provide that program sustainable.
I would, I would definitely say yes, but there is more work for us to do in that space. With the number of individuals, I had the team pull earlier, the number of, for example, paraprofessionals that do have a four-year degree. And we have hundreds in the district that have a four-year degree. But when we looked at the pipeline program that we had, I want to say the number was around thirty, that actually went into the program, and then you, you had fewer that were actually going through the program and graduating. So, it's already an opportunity, but it's an opportunity that we have to look at again and really readjust, be responsive to what some of the concerns were in terms of the program, and not just look at that one population, not just that one group, but we have others in the school district that already have a degree as well, and being able to follow up with that.
Because again, I think the long-term solution to some of our issues are already within the district, that we have to give folks, and make the folks, the process easier for them to be able to do stuff more efficient.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Other board members who have comments or questions? Dr. Moffett?
So, I really appreciate the presentation and Vice President Craig's comments, because it's really along the lines of where I was going to go. I'm really concerned about retention, and so, my question is multifaceted in that I'm very interested to see the climate survey of the staff-only data. I think when we talk about referrals and giving bonuses for that, if people are not happy here, then they're not going to stay, and they're going to tell somebody else that they're not happy. So, we need to shore up our house first, in addition to, I'm not saying that we're not doing that, but I'm interested in what is being done. My question is, what is being done differently that has not been done before? Because we've heard this presentation about going to our partners, the pipeline between Xavier for Montessori and UC, we've got those established partnerships, we've got the, the technology, we've got, all of these things are great, and there is a national shortage. But I, I'm very interested in what are we doing differently, and what are we doing to keep the ones that we have that, that are happy and that will stay and that want to evolve here? So, and before I give you a chance to answer that one, our alternative to licensure needs a lot of work. I was able to reach out to Ms. Riley, because people have reached out to me and said, hey, I can't, I cannot navigate the website to get that done. That has historically been a problem, and it remains one as well. So, I really would like to see what are we doing, like immediately, to really fix some of the things within ourselves that we could, we could really do to make some immediate improvements, to not only change the climate, but make it feel more welcome to people that are interested in coming.
So, I think, I think the first thing that I'm going to say is that the change in our climate and culture did not happen overnight, and so, therefore, it is not going to be resolved and fixed overnight. I think the first thing that we're doing is acknowledging, and I don't know how, I don't know how often that's happened. don't know how, I don't know how often that's happened, but I think the first thing that we're acknowledging is there is something there that we need to work on, I shared in one of our very first conversations, and I shared the same thing in the conversation with the union, is when I looked at the data for our district, it was very clear to me that we didn't just have a recruitment problem, recruitment was not the issue, we can recruit teachers, but as quickly as recruiting them into the district, they're leaving, so we have both a recruitment problem and a retention problem, it was important for us, however, to be able to capture what that data said, and capture it in a way that's specific to every individual school, so we've been able to do that through Panorama, to just get started, Panorama allows us to then at least see what the responses are within the school building, so we know what kind of cultural things we're dealing with outside of what we're able to observe, by just going to school buildings and talking to staff that are in the buildings, I think the second thing that's also really important is, you know, there was a study that was done, and people have different, you know, schools of thought on this particular organization, but there was a study that was done by TNTP, and the study was called "The Irreplaceables," and it's online, anyone can go in and look at it, but it's called "The Irreplaceables," and as they did that study, one of the things that they reviewed is looking at teachers that are in your building, that are the highest-performing teachers, and those are the individuals that you want to keep, you want to keep individuals in the building that are really having a return on investment with the students that they're working with, when those individuals leave, they did a whole study around conversations with them, and why they were leaving their school environment, and it all went back to leadership in the building, the way leadership engaged with them in the building, and nobody said anything to them differently when they said they were leaving, so many of them shared that had someone simply said, I want you to stay, and I'm talking about teachers right now, had someone simply said, I would like for you to stay, they would have stayed in the building, and so I think when we start talking about culture, we really have to look at all of those areas, because there is, there is a conversation on both sides of that, there are principals that are looking at this presentation right now, and they're saying, okay, so that's talking about us, and what we're doing, or what we're not doing, by the same token, there are teachers that are looking at the presentation right now, or will look at it later, and say that if you just did this in the building, this would make the difference, so I think we're starting with ownership, that's number one, the second thing in terms of looking at, you know, where we are with our staff, when we cross-reference for our area, and I took this for our area, and looked at where we were in terms of financially, where our teachers are, our challenges are more, our challenges are greater than many others in our area, our pay for teachers, especially in that zero-to-five years to start with, is not commensurate with what happens in the area, so that's something that we collectively have to have some conversation around, and we have to look at, because we would say that it's not just about that, and in most instances, it's not, but if there are opportunities for us to help, to Board Member Bolton's point, augment salary, that's something that we need to lift, we need to raise, so that we can talk about what are some of those additional ways, I think the third, it's, you know, a part of the overall evaluation process for me, is to, human resources was one of the things that was there in terms of revamp, we have a full system that we're currently using, that we don't use all the modules for the process, that's not an overnight fix, and so we're going through the auditing process, the audit for human resources starts the end of February, after that audit is over, we're doing that audit with the Council of Great City Schools, after that audit is over, we will then have additional recommendations for what we need to do in that space, to make sure that we are able to be as responsive as we can, and that we're able to identify truly where we see the disconnects, and making recommendations for what we would need to do with that moving forward, the other thing that the Panorama work actually gives, because yes, we surveyed before, last year we did surveys of staff, we talked about in doing those surveys of staff, the year before it was a pilot, last year it was open to all of the schools, however, about 25% of the staff members actually completed the survey, so therefore, it didn't give hard data for what they were looking to do, the other piece of that is, it was also not anonymous, and so sometimes, until you begin to change the culture, sometimes people are uncomfortable giving information when they know their name is going to be attached to it, so this year, I know that there was some concern that we wouldn't get the response rates from staff that we actually got, but when over 65% of your staff actually respond, that gives us a great place to start, the other level of breakdown that we're doing for the survey is the breakdown in our certificated versus our non-certificated, so that we are able to then, and we use certificated and non as teachers versus not, now that may include some of the ancillary staff that Board Member Bolton was asking about earlier, but at least it lets us know where they are in terms of these questions, and what these questions look like.
Thanks, Dr. Moffett, any other board members? I'll share a couple thoughts here, unless the folks have items, and I just wanted to share, I think, maybe two or three things, the first is, I'm so grateful that this is a topic that we're talking about tonight, and I'm grateful for the care and commitment that the administration is putting into this, we have a lot of words that matter in our district, in our equity policy, we have a lot of words that matter in our anti-racism policy, but to me, what comes through in this presentation is planning and strategy to do something about those words that are in our equity policy, in our anti-racism policy, and I think this, the data, I think our own experiences, all reinforce how important this is, and I'm grateful for the focus that the administration is giving it, I would, two other quick things was, you know, I think, this is my fourth year on the board, and I think there has been a shift over the last little over a year, maybe 18 months, maybe a little bit longer, where my experience of our administration is, we are more transparent on issues where we have important work to do, and I think that kind of transparency is just crucial, what the superintendent said about owning the issue, you know, and so I think that that's an area where I've seen us make some shifts, and I'm grateful for that, and then the last thing, just to echo what my colleague, Vice President Craig, was sharing, I do think there are programs we are doing here that are exciting, and I hope we could scale, or learn, or duplicate, I was able to attend the Teach Program announcement at Aiken earlier this school year, and just the idea that we're building partnerships so that CPS students can get help with college in exchange for being a teacher back in CPS, you know, like that, I'm not saying there's any one thing that will reach all of our aspirations on this front, but boy, that certainly helps, you know, and I'm excited to see what we as a team and community can come up with in the weak months and years ahead, to continue trying to move the ball forward on this issue, so, thank you.
Thank you, and I do want to respond to Board Member Bolton as well, I transpose those numbers, the first number should be a two, it should be two, then six, so that was my fault, thank you, the other percentages are accurate, but I transpose those numbers.
We appreciate it, last call, any other comments, or superintendent, anything else on this item? Okay, we will keep moving, so we are moving to item H, we have a single resolution this evening, which is an alcohol waiver, and it's going to be presented by Board Member Morosky.
Thank you, President Lindy, it is my honor to present the resolution granting an alcohol waiver to Fairview German Language School for their foshing event, I present the resolution as written.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton, any discussion or questions on the resolution? Dr. Moffett.
I just want to say, I'm noticing a theme here with Board Member Morosky on the alcohol things, I just want to make sure I say that out publicly, I'm noticing you're always getting these alcohol waivers.
Beer and wine only, beer and wine only, we got your waiver.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right, Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, do we have any retirements this evening?
We do not have any retirements today, President Lindy.
No retirements, do we have a motion to adopt the recommendations of the superintendent?
Still moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton, is there a second? Thank you, Member Jones, any discussion or questions on the superintendent's recommendations? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, I'd like to do the report of the treasurer here, but I want to note that, my understanding is that after the vote on the treasurer's report, we may have a motion from Ms. Bolton regarding the situation at Rothenburg, so we'll do the treasurer's report first, is there a motion to adopt the treasurer's, the revised treasurer's report this evening?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky, is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Moffett, any discussion or questions on the treasurer's report? Mrs. Weinberg.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions, I'm not sure exactly what number it is, or what page, but I just had a question on the cost for Teach for America, if the treasurer could just explain that?
So I'll actually explain it for my team member, so we have a partnership with Teach for America that allows us to, for their core members that are part of the district, there are about 40, existing, between existing staff, as well as those that are being recruited into the district, that provides for three different levels of professional development support for them, the contract actually, it's been in existence for several years, this particular year, when it was put, when the contract was put in, it was put in around April, but apparently, there was not the funding that went along with it, so when it came up in September or so, the services had already started, so that's why it's showing up the way that it is, so it's really for those different layers of professional development that start before they become, before the school year starts, then it goes throughout the school year that the Teach for America team works in partnership with the principals and the team members to provide additional coaching and coaching support for them, and it goes throughout the summer as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the treasurer's report? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
I will abstain on item five, and yes, on everything else.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, moving on to part two of our agenda, we have a board matters, we have two items this evening, just kidding, the motion that I previewed, and then blew right past, Ms. Bolton.
Thank you, in light, as you said, of the emergency that we have at Rothenburg Academy, I submit this following motion, a motion to grant the treasurer emergency spending authority related only to Rothenburg school repairs, not to exceed $1 million, all related contracts will be submitted for board information in the subsequent business meetings, I submit and hope for a second and approval.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky, any discussion on the motion for Rothenburg? Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes, okay, unless I forgot something else, we will now move on to board matters, we have two, the first is from Ms. Bolton on partner-vendor agreements.
Yes, this should be quick, again, just as a reminder, that as we approach both the budget effort, and also we're into the second half of the school year, there are remaining issues and agreements, be they metro sorta, or be they preschool promise, or an acceptance by the board of the review of the SRO MOU, any number of other issues that need to be presented, and looking forward to the administration briefing the board so that we can take action, as well as some appointments that we have to make at the next time that we meet, both for preschool promise, and also civil service commission, so I think we just need to kind of create, if the administration can help us create that, and board staff can help us create that list, so that we can be taking action as we need to.
Board Member Bolton, is this the same, or in addition to the MOUs, or this is the same for the MOUs from the last meeting?
It would be in addition to those, and I know that the CRA piece is, you know, in the next year or so, has to be negotiated, but I know President Sellers has been bringing that forward, so yes, if we can just figure out those things we need to be signing off on, or agreeing to, or giving some direction, I think that'd be important for us to get that off our list, if possible. Thank you.
Any other board members, comments or questions on this board matters item? Hearing none, we have a second from Dr. Moffett on the Woodward versus Taft game.
So I just really wanted to have a formalized understanding of what happened with regard to that, I think, kind of owe that to the community a little bit, to understand how we got from that decision, from just a little historical background, and then how we got to that decision, I personally think that we, I would love for us to have involved parents, we have a Be Present initiative that speaks specifically to parental involvement as part of that, and yet we did not do that, so can we give a little historical perspective?
Sure, thank you, as I shared with the board previously, and also, the principals put out the information that they did at their school sites, when the teams played previously during this school year, they had a pretty large fight, the fight involved adults that were in the stand, and the schools were concerned that bringing the groups back together again, they would get the same kind of response, so the schools administrations had, the two groups, the two school administrations had conversation together, apparently, in the district, we have used this process in the past, so they also had conversation with the athletic director, and the athletic directors collectively, they decided that they thought that that would be the best thing for them to do, I think where, and we all have a lot of questions about that, but essentially, that's the way that it started, where I think their initial challenge came in, is once they did that, because one of the schools had already announced that that would be their senior night, Woodward, when the principal from Taft sent out his information, he shared that they would not have any spectators, however, the seniors from Woodward were going to be allowed to have spectators, when I actually found out, as I shared with the board, I found out about the actual decision after it had already been placed on social media, and once I found out about the decision, and reviewed the information that was there, had some follow-up with the schools, on a lot of different levels, there were questions, I understand the principal's perspective as a former high school principal, that had to work with a lot of athletic events, for them, they just wanted to make sure that they didn't have another issue, they were concerned about having an issue at the game, so they thought that that was the best thing for them to do, however, we do want to make sure that we are, and I do need to add, that in the other game, some of the adults were the ones that were involved in the fighting that was at the school, so they were really looking for a way to allow the students to play, and not have them engaged in anything that was physical, I think after having some follow-up and follow-up discussion, and understanding as a parent as well, you know, if your children are involved in something, you want to make sure that parents and caregivers are able to participate, and I think the schools recognized that that was something that was really important, so it was a learning opportunity for them, an unfortunate one, in that it became very public, very fast, and everyone had an opinion, and so it's important that we know that as we got the information, we worked with the schools, they clarified and they updated, but I'll share the same thing now, that I shared on Lincoln Ware Show, because I was on Lincoln Ware Show right before the game, this is a microcosm of a larger issue, while this was an issue at this particular game, it's important that we recognize that this kind of thing happens at games, and it's not one of the things, it's not something that we can actually have enough security in one space to address the issue without involving those that are there, so when we think about it, it's important that we do come to having conversations with the teams, the teams after the fact, after they had their issue, they came together in a restorative way, they actually had lunch or dinner together in a restorative way, so that they could get to the bottom of, for themselves, how it got so heated for them, but that was not the same thing, or the same thing that was done in terms of the families, so what my recommendation would be So what my recommendation would be moving forward, and I've shared this with the team already, you know, these kinds of decisions, we do want to make sure that we are inclusive. We do want to make sure that we've had an opportunity to have some discussion before we make the decision. I could not share it with the board because I did not realize that the decision was happening. And so once I did find out, I was able to do necessary follow-up. I did go to the game, and in being at the game, the game was, the students did have support there at the game. We did have security personnel at the game, and the game, of course, that night went over without any additional concerns, but it's also for us, we are going back at this point to reviewing all of our protocols for the games, what's appropriate to have at the games, what's not appropriate. Do we need to look at the number of individuals that are at the games? Do we need to reassess security and how we can involve the parents in the discussions? So understanding that when those things start to happen, if it's necessary for people to have to leave the game, then they may have to do that, to keep it from getting out of control, because as, you know, as it gets more and more, as there's more and more concern, it does give an opportunity to get, for things to happen that you don't anticipate happening.
Well, I just, I would really, really hope that moving forward, we talk to students, because the original incident happened in January, so this is February, so we could really have had an opportunity to take some time and engage some students, engage some parents, particularly around spectators and proper behavior. So I just wanted us to at least tell the community what happened. Again, now we have an example of how parents feel, and they do want to be included. So moving forward, I would hope that we could do differently.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Other people have any other questions? Okay, we will move on to inquiries and updates. I think Vice President Craig, did you want to share a couple on the council?
So as the Council on Great City Schools liaison from the board here, that means I'm now on their board also. So that meant they had their regular board meeting, and one of the things they did talk about is the current House of Representatives is not as loving of SRR3 funds as the previous House was. And so that is one area where there are going to be a lot of scrutiny. We brought it up a little bit in the Budget and Finance Committee with regards to making sure that every district is, you know, dotting those i's, crossing those t's, to demonstrate that the funds are being used for the right purpose. I think it's important for our community also to know that that's an area where we have done a tremendous job of detailing and being really prepared to detail how the funds are being used and where those funds are going, and even explaining what SRR funds are as opposed to what the general fund is. So I think that's been something we are ahead of the game on. There was also a lot of discussion around, and I think this is just something that all of the districts around the country are probably dealing with, is just understanding how to deal with the ever-changing relationship between school boards and the interests that want to affect how schools are run and governed on those school boards. And so there's a lot of that dynamic of conversations around, how do you operate or facilitate school board meetings in a way that does not create problems within the community, but also doesn't exacerbate some of the political divides that could be part of the school board process? The other thing that I'll mention is just that there is the Legislative and Policy Conference, which I will be attending in March in DC. Again, to get more information from them, and I think it's also a great opportunity to ask any questions of the lobbyists that they utilize to really press Congress on what's going to be going on in these next few years, because we already know that our state doesn't, our state government doesn't exactly love us at times. Let's hope the federal government will be a little bit better.
Thanks, Vice President Craig. Any questions on the? Okay, other inquiries or updates? Ms. Bolton?
Vice President's going to be there, and be sure to stop in to see our number-one supporter, Senator Brown. And also, at least now at the House of Representatives, we have another supporter in that office with Mr. Landsman, so it'll be great. I know they will be anxious to hear from you. Yeah, go say hi.
I'll be happy to go say hi, too.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bolton. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Other inquiries and updates? I have one, but I'm happy to go after other folks. Ms. Bolton?
Just an update from our superintendent. While I'm disappointed in some of the changes from the college boards regarding the AP African-American History course, just want to make sure that the public knows, and we get an update as to how we are indeed going forward with that for the coming year. I know that it's been on our back burner for three years or so, and we're among the first districts to be endorsing it and getting the administration great info from our Social Studies Curriculum Director, and I just want to know what our update is about implementation.
We are moving forward as a school district, so we will see African-American history in our schools and CPS this coming school year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other inquiries or updates? I have an inquiry. I know we've chatted in some past meetings about the, I think, deeply unfortunate vacancy we have on the Sincere Preschool Promise Board with the passing of Dr. Owens. Could someone just remind me where we are in that process of generating a nomination?
So we're still in the process of looking for candidates. Both our General Counsel, Hoang, and I have been working together through that. We are hopeful that by the last board meeting in this month, because we actually have two vacancies, one is on this board and the other one is on our civil service board as well, with some very narrow dynamics for that one as well. So we're hopeful that by the end of the month, we've began to have conversations with individuals. So far, we've not had a take or on our ask, but we are still encouraged, and we're being encouraging, and we're continuing to look for individuals. That's the best way for me to respond.
That's excellent. If any of us can help, I hope you'll let us know.
Well, I think the one thing is, if there are individuals that you know, I know that our General Counsel will share that in our last meeting together, but if there are individuals that you know, for our, for the Civil Service Commission, we know that they also, they have to have a certain party affiliation, but if there are individuals that you know that might be interested, please let us know that so that we can get engaged with them to see if they would be interested in the nomination.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, then, Mrs. Weinberg.
I just had to ask Ms. Bolton a clarifying question, having been around when we first established that. But one of the criteria that we use, and I'm not sure if you're following that criteria or whatever, but was looking at identifying by organization. So, for example, we had someone representative who came from the NAACP, so if they left, then we would go back to the NAACP. And so I didn't know if that was part of your thinking or actions or what, in looking at it that way, or are we going in a different direction?
No, I actually think that we have looked at it in both ways. So the last individual that we had, actually on preschool promise that came up, that member is still on the board, that came from the NAACP, and so outside of that, we have looked at other individuals that were connected to organizations, and I'll be honest, a few of them, by the, when we were in need, they had just accepted a role on a different committee and just really weren't in a position where they could make that kind of commitment. But we are using that process to think through it as well, in terms of looking at those that we're looking to recommend. Now, we have not, in transparency, gone back to the NAACP because their person is still there, but in terms of thinking about organizations, yes.
Yeah, I was just looking at that as an example, but, you know, the unfortunate loss of Dr. Owens, and I believe he represented, was it CPS? No, I know he represented, but from what organization?
Was it Interact for him?
Was it Interact for him? I don't know, but yeah. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mrs. Weinberg?
I just wanted to know, what would be the deadline? When do they need to have the names submitted?
I need to double-check in terms of the list. I believe that it's April, but I don't, but don't quote me on that. So I'll double-check the actual date.
I think it might be, if it's March 1st, and you're saying that you would like to submit a name to us at least by the end of February, let's say if the date is March 1st, would that be kind of the timeline that you're thinking about?
I'm hopeful that we will be able to have someone shortly thereafter, but at the rate that we're going right now, I am being optimistic, but there's a lot more that's going to have to happen in that space.
And that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we were adhering to the deadline. I wouldn't want us to miss the deadline at all.
Any other inquiries or updates? Okay, moving on to assignments. Are there any assignments this evening? Mr. Craig?
And I'm really just making this formalized assignment, but because I think it's something we've already talked about doing, but I just would like to have each of the committees review their practices in connection with the bylaws. And so, because I think we do, we already talked about this at our Saturday meeting, that we need to do a revamp of the bylaws, and I think policy is already going to spearhead and take that on, but I think it would be helpful for us to maybe give them feedback as to what our committees are doing and are not doing, and how they mirror to what the bylaws say they, and so that we can update them in a responsible way. So I just wanted to have each of the committee pairs work with their committees to make sure that we're connecting of what the bylaws should say to what they currently say now.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. So assignments get made either with a consensus or a vote with a majority of the board members. Any dissenting views on asking committees to share that feedback?
Just the regular committees, because I don't think we have a, I mean, I think the bylaws are more generalized for ad hoc committees than in specific. Yeah.
Any, okay, great. So that assignment sounds good. Any other requests for assignments this evening? Okay, any announcements or kudos? Mrs. Weinberg?
I'll do a quick announcement. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Black History Month, and just to remind everyone that the Freedom Center is open on the 19th, and it is free for anyone who wants to attend.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any other announcements or kudos? Dr. Moffett?
So I do want to say to one of our staff members who we were going to do a kudos for, Mrs. Jenkins, we're still working on that, so don't get discouraged, we are still working on that. And then also, I had a really great session today doing mock interviews at Aiken for the career-based learning folks. And so we've got some awesome seniors that are graduating. They are, they know what they want, what they want, and they are very, very focused. The chance to meet the valedictorian, and it was awesome. So congratulations. And also, Lee Black sent a list of students who performed really, really well. I don't have all of the specifics, but we got that. They're musicians, they performed outstanding. I didn't get permission to mention them by name, so I didn't do that, but to those students at SDPA that rocked it at NKU, congratulations. They got outstanding, honorable mention, they just, they did some good stuff, so.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any other kudos or announcements? Last call. Okay, having no other business before us, I declare our meeting adjourned. Have a lovely evening.